Good evening. It's pretty close to 7:00 on Monday, May 12th. This is council meeting, we'll be meeting in committees tonight. We will have Finance and Personnel Committee led by Chris Nysley, Transportation Committee, Michelle Pappy, City and Safety Services Committee led by Steve Patterson, and Planning and Development Committee by Chris Fall. So we're going to turn the write over to Ms. Nysley for the Finance and Personnel Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our first item tonight is the Recreation Advisory Board, and some of the members are here with us tonight. We want to present a little bit of background information and then turn it over to our Community Center Director and some of the Advisory Board Committee members. As way of background, citizens might remember that in 1995, the City Council passed and approved a .1% income tax for 20 years. So that was from 1996 with an expected expiration date of 2016. And then several years ago, the- Advisory Board began a long-range planning session, working with the city planner and also doing focus groups with various citizens, surveys both online and in-person or mailed surveys to begin that planning process for what we want to be looking at for the vision for arts parks and recreation for the next 20 years. At the end of this, there was a public meeting several weeks ago with community input on different concerns, different issues, and some of the mission and vision of what we're thinking about for arts parks and recreation. Looking at a little bit at the financial background for this levy that is coming up to expire, just a little bit of information on that first. The anticipated levy income information has been provided by the Auditor's Office, and in the last three years, 2014, 2015, and 2016, we will have $2.076 million generated in revenues from that levy during those three years. And against that $2.076 million, we will owe $1.453 million. This leaves a modest remaining balance of approximately $622,000. And then combined with the cash balance from previous years of $681,000, we will have approximately $1.3 million available, which would provide some funds for us to begin these early next steps for arts parks and recreations plans, potentially a feasibility study. So with the renewal term on this levy approaching, we're now looking to the next steps in planning, and I'd like to invite our Community Center Director, Rich Campatelli, and Advisory Committee Member and former Mayor Rick Abel to present some additional information for us tonight.
Thank you for having us. I think it's important that we recognize that we've done all the legwork and some things have been pointed out, and looking at amending the current ordinance and looking at moving forward. Currently, we're filling our pool, and that was one of the number-one situations that was identified in the levy, as well as some Arts West and Outlying Parks and Trail Systems. Having Rick on our team and been through this process before, he really knows the numbers and how this all works, so I applaud him. He's been a great help, and maybe let him get into the facts on what we were thinking and kind of lead what we'd like to do coming up here in the next couple of months.
Rick? I think one of the first things to do is that the Arts Parks and Recreation Advisory Board has presented and written out a recommendation to Mayor Wile and to City Council members. A lot of the thinking on this is that, as Chris Nysley has said, the current tax that's on the books will generate more than sufficient to pay off the bond indebtedness, but by that time, since in October, we'll celebrate our 14th year of being opening at the Community Center. You had another two years, and by golly, there's things to do there. It's not just paint, but there's potentials of a lot of equipment. Right now, there are a number of exercise machines there that are 14, almost 14-years-old and need replaced. But being that as it may, we would also look to see that really a balance of, you know, $1.4 million or so that was being stated is probably more than what we really need, and we do have a pressing need right now with the pool. The pool was built around 1971. I think it opened in 1972. I can remember back in '97, we put a new pool liner in there with the help of Natureworks for about $120,000, and in '97, they told us, "You'll get a good 10 years out of it." And it's now 17, if it gets open this year. So we think that our amendment, if possible, to the existing ordinance might be the route to grow because go, because we could still have in there to pay the expenses of the bond indebtedness and for the Community Center, but you could add on language that would enable us to hire people to go in and do architectural and programmatic work to design a new pool. If you wanted to give us an advance on that so we'd be ready more for the voters, I would appreciate it. Because right now, we were just guessing as to what pool costs are, because each pool is going to be designed differently. And one of the things that we have to look at with the current pool that we have is the construction time of it is going to be such that, you know, you don't want to lose a season if it can be open. So you want to look at where's the location of it. Preferably would be at the East State Street Park, but where there, and then the time it would take. So to amend to pay any of the expenses of the construction, equipment, and furnishing of a swimming pool. The survey also pointed out that we need to improve, not only at the pool and our accessibility improvements, but elsewhere. I think a good example is what council and the administration has done on Southside Park. That needs to be expanded to more neighborhood parks and the Community Center itself, but also at Arts West with restroom facilities and just to see access to that with what's programmed to be done, I think, this year to get to, into Sells Park for accessibility up to at least the pond area. There's other trail access points that we would need to look at. As I've already mentioned, the maintenance and upkeep, not only of the Community Center, but all of the Arts West and all of the, you know, what is it, how many hundred acres you got?
365.
365 acres of parkland that the city has needs that, and really with a staffing level that existed, gee, 20-years ago probably, of two maintenance technicians to do all the mowing. When I was down at the Community Center Sunday to go down, somebody was out there mowing the grass. And so it's really a seven-day-a-week operation now. And so I think some of those funds in the eyes of the Advisory Committee should go toward routine maintenance, safety inspections, and ongoing upkeep of the park areas and facilities, and this should be not just by contract services, but possibly part-time or full-time employees. And then we put in the coverall because we always know that projects will arise and come up if there are funds available. And so we put in, as our fifth recommendation, "Other department projects is approved by ordinance of City Council." So this is our recommendation to you. We'd be more than happy, Bill Walker of the Committee is also here tonight, we'd be happy to answer any questions. If it gets too technical, that's why Rich is here.
Thank you, Rick. I did receive the letter from the Advisory Commission recommending that Point 1-
Be put back on a ballot and renewed. I think it's a good idea, actually. I know that the, you know, we have expanded the footprint to recreation, and I'm also aware that that's one of my weakest suit is arts parks and recreation, but I recognize the fact that we've added quite a few activities, land, as you say, some primitive, some that needs a lot of work. So I don't know if you, I know the letter is forwarded to the council, so you have the recommendation from the Advisory Commission. The next thing, of course, is to move forward with it. I don't know what else, but again, it's been a lot of work, and it's, I know there are a lot of needs, too.
Councilmember Fall?
First of all, I want to say thank you to all the people who did the planning process for this whole thing. I think that there's always an issue that's brought up to council about why do we need more taxes? And people say, "Oh, it's going to be retired. We can retire this particular levy." And what I would argue is that recreation is one of the biggest draws for economic development that there is of the type of economic development that we want in Athens. And I have made this argument over and over. There are certain things, you know, streets are always an issue. However, when people such as corporate CEOs and presidents look at places where they would like to open up their new facilities, they look at streets, and it's a given that the sewers are going to work, but they look at recreation. And that is a quality, a life quality issue that brings in the type of development we want. And so I think that it makes economic sense, economic development sense, for the city to look at this and to support the levy renewal. I just think that it makes huge sense. So I appreciate you bringing it forward, and I support it, and it's just really important.
Yes, Councilmember Fall?
I'd like to echo what Member Fall said, but to add one thing is that it is arts parks and recreation, so it's the arts element as well, you know, putting an emphasis on making places like Arts West accessible, as well as, as you mentioned, you know, access up to Sells Park Pond and other things, other elements. Again, we've seen the great benefit of having this, the ADA Accessible Surface put in over in the Southside Park. To see that at all of the parks in the City of Athens, I think, would be a great step forward in making our city inclusive to all. So thank you.
Councilmember Pappy?
Again, I echo the thank you as well. One of the things that maybe for people sitting or listening tonight, sitting in here, is when you ask for a mill, do you have the number on what that, you know, for a household of, you know, how they always break that out? Do you know what that is on this particular? Does anybody know?
I believe it's a dollar for 1,000.
Okay. Of income tax. Okay. So I think that gives people an idea what you're paying, if, you know, $50 a year or, you know, depending on what your income is. It's a pretty reasonable request from a community when we're looking for these kinds of facilities and these kinds of efforts. So when you talk about the taxes, as Councilmember Fall said, really, in the long-term, it's a very small amount. When you think about how many times you walk or ride on the bike trail, you know, in the city per year or use the other facilities, so.
Comments from other council members or city administration?
In terms of process, I believe what would happen for amending this ordinance, 13795, the original ordinance, would be that if council is amenable to it, that we begin an ordinance within the next week to have council approve the renewal of this. That way, it would be passed before council takes a recess at the end of July, so that the ordinance to, or the wording to place it on the ballot could be received by the Board of Elections before August. And I believe that 90 days before our election is August 6th. So that's why we're needing to be discussing it now and giving us ample time to getting it filed in time. And if that's the case, then it gets to the Board of Elections by August 6th, then it can be placed on the fall ballot for renewal.
Yes?
I just would like to say to the general citizenry after that this is not a, even though it'll be placed on the fall ballot, it won't take effect until the expiration of the existing levy.
Correct.
So there's no double up?
There's not an overlap like there was once with, that we found, we felt it necessary for the street levy renewal, but this one would begin then on January 1, 2017, because the current one expires December 31st, 2016.
Sensing general support and consensus? Yes, Councilmember Butler?
Yes, I would like to echo my apologies, well, like to echo my support and apologies for being late. I was at Hocken College and didn't want to speed too fast to get here, but I do acknowledge that we have an aging infrastructure and feel that this is necessary. I think I would agree with Councilmember Fall that it is a quality-of-life issue, and it's a community determination about what do we want to offer our community. So if the community supports this and wants to move forward, then that enhances all the activities and resources that we are able to access. So I do support this, and I'm excited to progress forward. Thank you. And thanks for the hard work with the auditor and former Mayor Abel and Rich Campatelli, as well as other members of the Rec Advisory Board.
I know the Rec Advisory Board has worked, you know, quite hard with Rich, and councilmembers Patterson and Butler have been involved in this, City Planner Paul Logue, and quite a number of people, so thanks for the effort. We're also keeping this sufficiently open to, as former Mayor Abel mentioned, you know, for additional projects. The primary ones that came about as a result of, there are public meeting and also the surveys, and is the pool, and it being one of our oldest parts of our arts parks and recreation facility. But that doesn't mean that there can't be, you know, other projects that might come forward that we can work on with council discussion with the Recreation Advisory Committee. Okay? Thank you very much. Yes?
I think just a reminder, it is on the website, the plan. I think that's important to remind council if they want to-
Yes, it is. It's probably under Forms and Documents, under Arts Parks and Recreation, on the front page of the city website.
There's also a summary on it, so.
And that's a good, yeah, useful document. Okay. Thank you very much for coming tonight. Next item for Finance and Personnel are appropriations that will be coming forward in the form of an ordinance next week, and to the best of my knowledge, we have four items that will be coming forward. One of them, the first one being for the pullout for the buses that was created this past year on Richland Avenue. I think that many of us saw that with the increased traffic at the crosswalk on Richland and the, a lot of bus traffic that's been picking up there became a safety issue, and so we, this, we have a bill from the prior year of $11,500 to pay for this. We had been hopeful that we might have been able to charge it to the last of the Oxbow project and some of the grant money from Ohio Department of Transportation, but this was not something that they allowed. But certainly, I think it's been a real improvement in the safety situation on Richland Avenue with the transportation there, so urging us to move forward with that $11,500 appropriation, and that would have come out of account 572, which is our street rehab account. The second appropriation would be for what's called TIF, that stands for Tax Incremental Financing, and this is the tax incentive program used, utilized by several properties on East State Street, and the funds have been used to make improvements on East State Street. And a very, just a very basic background information on the TIF is that of this money, 45% goes to the schools, the remaining 55% is transferred and will be used at this point for transportation infrastructure. So the recommendation is, is that there be $220,000 for the Athens City Schools, that's our percentage that is due to them, $15,000 to the county auditor, and then $250,000 for transportation infrastructure.
Which actually is to pay down, pay off our, for East State Street improvements.
The third appropriation item that we have coming forward next week will be for our annual street paving, and we, several weeks ago, we went on the city annual city street and infrastructure tour with Director of Public Works Andy Stone, and he was able to share with us some of the things that will be coming up for repair. He's also, has a criteria system by which he judges age and criticality of the conditions of certain of the roads, and then creates a list of the roads that will be receiving paving this coming year. And we'll eventually have a finalized list, but I think it's in draft form right now. The appropriation for that amount of paving for this summer is $300,000, and it would be split between two accounts, the 572 account, which once again is the street rehab account, and then account 220, which is the street. And then we, our fourth appropriation item is from the police chief, and this is for Mark's radio system. And there is some money that's available in the law enforcement trust fund, and then also another account. And what's happened is, is that we have radio transmitters available in the vehicles now, but we are having some real maintenance and just performance issues with those radios. And I know that we've heard about presentation before about this Mark's radio system. It makes it much more seamless, it gives us accessibility to other safety patrol information resources around the state, and so it would be a real improvement for our radio system. And I know that you know what Mark stands for, Councilmember Patterson, so if you can help me.
Oddly enough, I do. It's the Multi-Agency Radio Communication System is what Mark stands for. And the beauty of that system is all the other agencies throughout the state, State Highway Patrol, the sheriffs, Athens County Sheriff, and I would assume, an assumption, but I think most other county sheriff's offices also use the Marks. I mean, talking with Chief Pyle, it makes things seamless to be able to communicate back and forth. The other thing that he shared is the quality of the communications that you receive from the Mark system. He said it's like talking to someone on the landline as opposed to the current system, which-
Is often garbled and unintelligible, that he has said, the police chief has said for us. So what this would do is it's like a dash mount mobile radio unit, and if council is amenable to moving forward on this, I believe we can get a $500 discount per item, per unit, if we are able to act on this in appropriation measure next week. And that would mean suspending, but as Auditor Heck reminded me, and I need to make sure that I mention this, too, when we move to suspend, it's for health, safety, and welfare reasons, I think is what the Ohio Revised Code defines this as. And I would certainly say that if we've got a non-functioning mobile unit or poorly functioning mobile unit for our police cruisers, that I think that would be a reasonable request for health, safety, and welfare. But I'll put that out there now as part of it. Yes?
I was just going to add that, as far as I know, the money is still coming out of two, two funds that are basically police funds that we have, law enforcement trust fund and the drug enforcement trust fund, not out of the general fund. That money's there, and it's more restrictive in what you can spend that money for, but Chief Pyle has already gotten approval to use the funds for that, so it won't be coming out of the general fund.
So there's $500 savings if we can add quickly, and how much is each unit?
Well, the total is around, close to $40,000, isn't it?
Yeah.
Out of the two funds.
Okay, yeah.
$41,000.
So it would be expending a majority of the funds that are there.
It would, it would.
Certainly something we've been talking about for several years now, but it would be a good-
Yes, Councilmember Pappy?
So Ms. Kathy, when you mention it's already been approved, do you mean through those two fund lines?
No, that we need the appropriations. The actual expenditure has been approved, because as I said, there are limits on what you can purchase out of those funds.
That's what I meant. That's, I just need to clarify for you.
Yeah, no, I believe Chief Pyle asked about that and has been told that that would be, you know, a viable expense out of those funds.
I mean, it seems to make sense. You need to have proper communication.
And this will only get us to where we can get with the money that we have available. It's still going to run, oh, I'm estimating about $8,000 short in order to do it, the entire division, but this will improve the safety. And from sitting in a labor management meeting, I can tell you that this is an issue, and this has been an issue for the eight years in terms of making sure that we have a good radio system that can be reached, because we have geography alone, pockets and buildings and hills and valleys.
So it's not only for the police officers, but the safety of those who-
Need the response.
-may be phoning in and needing a response in an emergency situation.
Mayor Wile?
And again, we've been patching together, I think he sent a narrative, as I'm honest, we've been patching the VHF system over and over again, so it's time to just switch over. In the past, for the special events, festivals, and Halloween, we actually, the state comes down and supplies us with Mark's radios regularly. They pass them out, so everybody's on the same wavelength and can work well together. And so we've had experience with this on that level. And again, it is statewide. It's the idea that you can communicate with somebody across the, you know, whether Highway Patrol or Fire Departments, anywhere. Not that we need that, but the fact is that it's a better system than what we have now.
So how many units are we?
Total units we're going to get, if I'm reading this correctly, is this one, it's eight and six, 16?
Six, six, yep, correct.
Okay. So we're talking about 14 right now. Portable and mobile, there's two different kinds. I imagine one's for the vehicles and one's for the handheld. And I think we have a few already, if I remember, but we're not-
We do, but we need-
Enough for our system.
I mean, we're still not going to get to the full contingency we do need, and if funds can be come in, you know, we may be asking again, is we get additional dollars into those fund lines?
And I'll tell you, I'm ignorant of how many we have and which departments. I think Fire wants some, too, if they, I think they have some as well.
Fire has, there's, what each department does have to do is absorb the ongoing, like, maintenance support costs, and so they build that into their budget.
Okay, well, yes.
I was just trying to ask, you say this wouldn't outfit the whole department. How many would it take to outfit the whole department?
As I indicated, if you got about-
Is that it, right there?
-total of 23.
Yeah.
And we're asking for 14, because that's where the dollars are, and as we know, the general fund is extremely tight right now.
Certainly an improvement over what we have, yeah.
So I would ask again that it's red and suspended next week in order to meet that May end of the month deadline.
That's significant.
Yeah, I think so. Okay. All right. Thank you. Next item for finance concerns our Athens transit system, and the Director, Michael Lotman, has been in consultation with the City Administration and Mayor Wile about plans this year that include the purchase of a light transit vehicle and a minivan. And one of these vehicles is proposed as a more economical way for us to make stops for what's called deviations from the route, which are allowed on our bus system. We've moved to a fixed stop system, but there are occasionally places where we need to make the deviations for people, and I think that's allowed up to a quarter-mile away from our scheduled stops. And you all may remember that a portion of our income tax, after the top 15%, the remaining 85% has 1% that's devoted to transportation. And so what this does is generates approximately $90,000 a year in our income tax revenues that are, can be designated towards transportation. The total cost for the vehicles is approximately $100,000, and City Administration and the auditor and the Finance Committee are recommending the city borrow the money for the purchase of the vehicles. The auditor has checked for us. I think we can get a .3% interest rate on the amount of money to borrow for the vehicles, and then we will be reimbursed. Our city cost share on the portion of this $100,000 is about 40, 47?
Actually, 47 is what we have appropriated already.
Okay.
The start of the year, this was built into the budget, 48,000 in the TC-500s for transit, with the idea that's what we would, that's our 20% match- for transit, with the idea that's what we would, that's our 20% match we have to put in. The other $100,000 actually is to cover the other, the portion that we'll get reimbursed for, approximately. So it's an 80/20 match for the capital, capital budget in terms of buses and vans. So what we need to do is we will get reimbursed for the $100,000 that we're taking the loan out for.
Right.
Does that make sense? But I'd budget the 15, the 20% because I was thinking, okay, we'll, we can do that, but I wasn't thinking that we'd have to front the money for the other 100.
And if I'm understanding right from Michael Lockman, he says we can file for the reimbursement 30 days in advance of the vehicle delivery.
Which, when the delivery occurs, is when the valuer has to go out. So the concept there, if we time it right, we won't have to have a loan floating for such a long time. So that .3 will left you for the full year.
But we are wanting to move this forward now, because I think we've got about a four-month order time, and so being able to get these ordered would be critical. Councilmember Pappy, did you have a question?
So I did, because I've had some specific conversations with Michael on, you know, so this is one vehicle?
One van, one bus, light transit bus.
One van, two, one, two vehicles.
And this is the kind of bus or van, right now, our buses have some, not, it's a difficulty with hills, and we live in a hilly environment, so that has limited our bus routes. So do we know if this bus is capable of, you know, the Second Street Hill, or the Madison Street Hill, or that kind of thing, if it has the capacity to do that?
We know that one's light transit and one's a minivan, but I don't know specifically.
We'll have to dig down and see what kind of engine it has. In the past, when we were contracting with McDonald, their management usually went with one style bus. They preferred the type of engine, they preferred the type of configuration. And actually, they can make it up the hill, they just tear themselves up doing it. You know, when you look at Courtyard and Summit, to do those hairpins up and down, they have a preferred way. If you'll never, they used to come by to Hooper Side or the Courtyard just to know they didn't have to deal with it. I would assume that Michael's looked at that. I know the conversation I had with him is that I want a better mix of buses. I mean, there's something you said, yeah, by buying all the same type, the downside is it doesn't, you lose a little versatility in the process. But we'll check on that. I know we have a, I think he sent us the laundry list of items that he wants to put on with the dollar amount, but I haven't looked at it, dug down, say, okay, is that adequate for what we want? The van probably would work easily, that's not the problem, it's usually the buses, the light transit buses. And again, the light transit buses are style, you could go with a heavy-duty transit bus, small, and when I say light, they talk about size as well as capacity and strength, so. But again, you have an itemized list that you can add things and take away things. We'll check on that.
Thanks for the questions and comments. Our last item for finance and personnel tonight is the fire pumper truck, and this is a major item for the city. And many of the council members here and the City Administration have worked us through the purchase of a ladder truck a few years ago, and, which we set money aside for, for several years, and then also were able to work with the university for a contribution from them. So, Councilmember Patterson, you have some information on the pumper truck?
I do. The pumper truck that's being replaced, as I've been told, is old, which is really sad for me, since old is 20 years, I guess, which makes me ancient. But aside from that, the pumper truck price to the city is $612,000, $12,929. I said dollars twice. But it's expensive. The other thing that I, excuse me, that I had asked for was to kind of get a breakdown on the number of runs, and in particular, the runs that are made to Ohio University properties in 2012, 13, and 14. And percentage run-wise, it comes up, at least over those three years, pretty consistent, 34% for 2012, 33% in 2013, and 38% in 2014, this year alone. The reason I bring that up is that, again, much like with the ladder truck, which was, if anyone remembers, the resolution that was put forward was that 85% of the building stock in the city of Athens, that was four stories or greater, was Ohio University properties. And so to kind of think logically along the same lines, even, and for that, it was a little, in excess of $1 million for the ladder truck, of which Ohio University was able to put forward, or was willing to put forward, as you may remember, $250,000 in five installments. Given the number of runs for a pumper truck, even to come forward with, say, $100,000, two more installments, $50,000 would be nice to offset the price of this particular truck, given the number of runs that are made to Ohio University properties. But again, yet to be worked through, well aware of that. But again, this is an item that we'll need a project number on, and-
I think that's where you're going.
Oh, I'm sorry, question?
No. So we're establishing an account into which we'll put some money for a while?
If I may, we don't count it. We, in order to get this pricing, which would give us a 5% discount, we would have to place the order prior to July 31st.
This year.
To order the truck. We have, I'll have to defer to the auditor, 400-some-thousand left on our note for the ladder truck?
No, I think it's less than that.
Less than that?
Less than half.
And then we have $50,000 due from a high university prior to June 30th for this fiscal year contribution. So I didn't participate in the discussion, I apologize. I did not know if there was going to be some consideration about either attacking this purchase onto the existing loan, and also at the same time requesting the-
Continuation.
Additional year contribution from the university, or that would be, can I stretch it another year? It's just gonna get more expensive.
How long does it take to get this one?
Say, the build-out's about the same.
About a year?
It looks like our amount owed on the ladder truck's 225,000. Thousand.
You've been working that down.
I can find out.
It would be a new loan, a separate note.
Okay.
And something to consider at the interest rates that we're paying. If we can get a 5% discount, it would have to hang out there a long time for us to end up paying more for the loan than what we'd be paying if we go ahead and order it now at the interest rates we have.
So which, the recommendation would be, we actually start looking at putting a loan together, or?
It's up to you.
I understand that, but-
It depends.
Yes.
It's a frontline truck, it goes on almost every run. As a matter of fact, right now, because of, well, this summer, with the construction that's going to be occurring on campus, in particular, and of course, we have our own on West Union, the ladder is really being reserved unless they know they need it, because you can't, you're really not gonna be able to move in a vehicle on this upper green area.
Easily.
Yes, this front, frontline pumper truck does need to replace that.
When did you say was the deadline for?
Says July 31st in our paperwork. Well, it says prior to, but-
That's the quote that we're-
Prior to, yeah.
From the same place, we bought the ladder truck.
It's not Seton, this is Finley Fire. Finley Fire, which is who they purchased previous pumper trucks from, they're just different.
We need to talk to the university.
Or designs.
And have there been conversations with Ohio University regarding this request or the suggestion?
I would have to defer to-
We brought it up, but really haven't had a response. I mean, it's not like we discuss it every time we meet.
I would say that I have mentioned it, that there, this may be coming forward, and so I have alerted them. And basically, asking for, you know, an ongoing contribution to the safety services-
The fire safety of our city.
Right.
How's the campus?
I mean, we take the campus and the buildings also, but we also recognize, if you were to factor in the student housing that is privately owned, I'd just exponentially put that out. So it does not include, you know, the privately, the percentage runs do not include name this apartment complex, other than unless it's owned by a high university.
Thank you for mentioning that. Chief Reimer made that very clear to me, and I think that's a great point, is that the percentages that I was throwing out, those were only for OU properties, they're not for any of the other rental units across, throughout the city that students may be living in. I asked for those numbers, and they said that was, that would be very difficult to provide. But regardless, it's-
Even if you made a few calculations, like we've got a 70% rental rate, and we could extrapolate some approximate amounts.
Well, what you'd be doing is looking at the rest of the calls. The data that I think was submitted to you, I have 2013 as the latest one here, there were 276 calls, have a total of 823, so that's where you get to 33.5%. So if you're, I don't know how you parse out that other 823, or rather, remaining of them. I can't do the math real quick there, but about 500 more, 500 change, so you'd say 75% of those, maybe, if you're going in rental. But I don't know if that's an accurate one, because rental, you know. And again, if you look at, we have a fund line that we normally get from impacted funds for OU and police and fire from the state, and that is estimated, estimated revenue for this year is $25,000. So we do get some money for our impact, but it's nowhere near adequate. And it's been going down every year since-
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
And that's not guaranteed to come in, in the future?
We don't know.
So, well, I would not count on it.
Yeah, as I say, we don't know.
Because that's a legislative item, is from the State House, you're saying?
It's a state budget item.
Yes, it is.
And we have seen the budget for local communities be slashed, so.
I think if I recall correctly, and Auditor Heck can remind me, or maybe perhaps the clerk, at one point, I believe, we used to receive an impact fee as much as $90,000 a year, or at least 60, 60 to 90 thousand?
Yeah, it was over $50,000 one night, 10 years ago.
Okay.
$55,000.
And it does continue to become less and less each year, unfortunately.
It's been down in the 20s for several years now.
Which is why, again, I want to thank the mayor's office for having that dialogue with the university, and I know we have a scheduled meeting with President McDavis, I believe, in June as well. Is that correct?
May.
That's what I said, end of May. So we can echo that sentiment there, too.
You're echoing.
Thank you.
So, directions, Sonia?
I hear from the auditor that it would require a separate loan. I'll ask about the build-out time, but, you know, to meet that July 31st, maybe, but it's probably where we're landing to report.
I think it's good to have a separate loan, just because we may or may not get additional funding, whatever, and it just, in my mind anyways, it just keeps it clear for accounting purposes, whether it's, you know, I think it's important to know that when you need to pull it out from whatever report, or whoever you're, who's ever needing that information. You said how many more payments on the 200 and-
We have 225,000.
Three, two or three years?
So we have three more payments of $50,000?
No, two more.
I'm sorry.
Two more.
From OU.
From OU.
Yeah. Excluding this payment that the invoice has gone out due, then they pay prior to June 30th, there will be two more years.
Okay.
$100,000, which still leaves our balance at 125.
Yeah, about 125 left, I think, I believe.
And we have a to-be-determined payment amount on our note prior to the end of the year. I'm sure, I'm sure we have every other year assigned at least the amount that we get back from, get contribution from the university, and then any addition that we can-
In fact, I think last year we matched it.
We absolutely use that $50,000, and then it's whatever the city can, yeah, can add on to that for the balance.
To tell you the truth, I wasn't expecting to buy it this year, just because I didn't think we had the money, and I was hesitant to go with that.
I think it would be helpful for us to get some additional information, loan amount, how much we might have available in the different funds, that kind of thing, a firm price. I thought the number was a little bit lower than the 612, or is this 580?
Right, that's the discounted, by July 31st.
It would reduce it to 586, 586,000.
Yes.
Okay.
And this is the schedule, 20 years, that's what I'm saying. If you ask me to stretch it another year, we'll work on that. But again, I don't believe the price is gonna go down.
And the traded value, that's gonna change either.
And there may be maintenance costs associated with that. The thing is, is that if the, we get such great loan rates right now, I mean, it may save us more money to buy it this year as opposed to next year. It's just-
Have we had maintenance costs most recently on this pumper truck? Do we know? Has there been a major repair which would indicate to us maybe we need to do it sooner rather than later?
I will check, but-
I just think it'd be good information to have, I mean, if something major has had to be replaced or worked on.
We had a tranny fall out on one of our trucks on the highway.
Yeah, that might have been it.
They're big machines, and when they-
Right.
Break, they break hard.
They break big, yes, correct.
So I'll report back.
Thank you. It would be helpful.
I just, one other thing, I'm not necessarily seeing consensus there on the administration table, so, yeah, I do think we need more information.
Well, again, my concern, of course, is the debt load. I was hoping that we at least start, we should have started, maybe a couple of years ago, starting to save money on it, but we always seem to use up most of the money we have. At the same time, I look and I was thinking, okay, we could stock some way like we did with the ladder truck, we could survive it. But again, it depends on how acute the need is. I mean, the age of a truck, and I know, I am aware of the fact we had one stranded on a highway there when the drive shaft fell out or something like that, so. Them approaching us and saying it needs to be replaced, I assume that they know what they're doing, you know? And I'm getting this from the maintenance people as well as the fire department, so. I'd like to be able to stretch it longer, but, you know, that's the reality.
And I do want to remind everyone that there is the resolution on record from before, which was Resolution 05-11 urging the university, Ohio University, to contribute to the ladder truck, and worth writing a second resolution, if need be, for the pumper truck as well.
I think that's all the items that I have for finance.
Let's move along to the discussion with the Transportation Committee. Ms. Pappy, gonna start with the Brew event.
Thank you. And there'll be a few items we really don't need to discuss much more because they were covered by, remember nicely. So as we get to those, I'll mention those. Okay, we have a guest this evening, Weston Lombard, who's gonna come up and speak to us about Brew Week, specifically our needs as a council in terms of ordinances related to the final event of Brew Week. Thank you, Weston.
Thank you, Councilwoman Pappy. As you know, this is the ninth annual Ohio Brew Week. It's July 11th through 19th this year. And for those of you who don't know me, I'm taking over this year for Dan Gates, it's my first year as director. And as usual with the event, it concludes with a street festival that involves local arts and food vendors, as well as beer vendors on the street, music, and just sort of an all-day, family-friendly uptown event. That event and the whole week in general are meant to sort of highlight Athens' unique bars and restaurants, as well as the local food and sort of craft beer industry in the region and in the state. This is actually the only event in the country that features entirely state-specific beers all in one city. So I believe that the event fits with Athens' sort of local food movement, and just, in addition, is a great boon for the city in an otherwise economically difficult period. I know this event helps out a lot of bars and restaurants, hotels, and sort of everyone in- of bars and restaurants, hotels, and sort of everyone in the city benefits from the thousands of people who come during the week. So with that in mind, we would like permission to use Court Street on Saturday, the 19th, from, I believe, 2:00 PM to 11:00 PM.
Right. We have to close sooner to prepare, but that would be, the event would be from 2 to 11.
Yes, correct.
Right. Any questions, council? Jim?
From where to where?
From Carpenter to Washington.
I'm sorry?
Carpenter Street to Washington.
Thank you.
But not shutting down either Carpenter or Washington, just...
Between.
Between them.
Steve?
The, and the event would also, like most of our uptown events that occur on Court Street where there's a closing, it'll be more than 2 to 11:00 PM. It'll probably be before that for, for setup?
It'll be from 10. Yeah, 10 to midnight.
Correct.
10:00 AM to midnight. Because you'll need many hours to set up, and then you'll need hours to clean up.
With the emphasis on cleanup.
With the emphasis on cleanup.
And glass-free.
It'll be glass-free. We have a plethora of ordinances here that I can quickly...
It's our packet.
It's our packet of ordinances for Court Street closure. Is there anything else? I know that there's going to be, there is the art section that will be, as was started last year, and then there's a bit more of a kid-friendly area, I think, in the parking lot, the metered parking lot there, or...
I don't want to say that's not the case, but I don't know that that's the case.
That's, that would be for Boogie on the Bricks.
Oh, that's Boogie on the Bricks. Yes, why would I even consider putting these things together? That's not a good idea.
Kid-friendly in the Brew Week?
Yeah, that's not right. And what is the name of the event this year?
The name this year and last year, I believe, is The Last Call.
Okay, because it's the last event of Brew Week of the, the week-long events. So it's being called The Last Call. Yes, Kent?
Thank you. Thank you, Weston. Is there efforts to address recycling needs as well? Has that been discussed or mentioned during the course of planning?
Yes. I've had a number of conversations with Kyle O'Keefe from Rural Action, and we are coordinating with them to make it a zero-waste event.
Super.
The one, the challenge will be they are, they are booked for another large event that weekend, so they're going to help us with a lot of upfront setup and preparation. But yes.
Sure.
What's the other large event?
They're going to be in Cincinnati for some festival.
Oh, okay. It's not like competition with...
No.
You know, Nelsonville Brew Week, or...
It's hard to keep up with all the events. There was something at the fairgrounds nobody knew about this weekend, so, you know.
I didn't know about that one either.
Yeah.
Something to kind of dovetail on what Weston was just mentioning about the zero-waste is that one of the things I know that Brew Week has been doing is also kind of vetting some of the vendors that would come to that event, at least to ask that they also provide biodegradable plates and cups, and things of that nature.
So that is part of what you'll be doing, Weston?
That is part of my plan, yes. We do intend to sell reusable cups, commemorative cups with our new artwork on it, to vent the beer itself, so.
Okay. Any other questions for Weston? Okay.
I have one question for the committee. On ordinance 0-86-13, it's for the vendor...
Weston, that needs tweaked. I just now was looking at that. It'll be similar to what we just did for Boogie.
Okay, what would that look like?
I don't, I, the vendors who already currently hold a license are allowed to stay where they are and have that, and then, because they're already paying to then. So I'll just need to look at it, and it'll probably model similarly after Boogie. We can get you a copy later this week of the proposal, proposed changes.
Thank you. Thanks, Weston.
Thank you, Weston. And I want to apologize, I didn't, I don't know why I said "family-friendly", because it isn't a adult event.
I mean, truly?
Well, no.
Okay.
If I can interject.
Yes, please.
The, I know that one of the goals of Brew Week for The Last Call is to become more and more family-friendly. There will be arts out on the street, there will be a mask, as there was last year, a mask-making competition, which is open to all. There's a number of younger children who made masks last year. I believe Patty Mitchell is going to have the Parade of Puppets during the Brew Week event as well, not to be called a parade, but to have them walking up and down.
It's already closed, it's okay.
Court Street, well, just being careful with the way things are. But it is migrating into a family-friendly event.
Okay. I'll just quickly review the ordinances. So we will be suspending enforcement of metered parking in the city garage, so we have free parking for that day. We also will, as we discussed, close Court Street, and again, the date is Saturday, July 19, and we begin closing it at 10:00 AM to midnight. The other ordinances, we suspend our enforcement of unnecessary noise during that period of time, so that will not be enforced. And then the vending peddling and soliciting to allow vending in that area. And so we are going to, it is a bit different, and we are going to tighten this ordinance before next week. And I believe we can do all three readings, or are we going to need to suspend?
I think we're aligned with three readings.
We're aligned, okay. So that'll be good. No need for suspension. Okay, so, and then I didn't have the glass-free, so we already, well, we already have the glass-free ordinance, don't we? Do we technically need a specialized one for the closing of Court Street?
I'll defer to the police chief and discuss with him. Sometimes he just thinks it makes it cleaner to go ahead and have the glass-free ordinance.
Okay, so you'll bring that forward, bring that forward next week if we need to. All right. So I assume the commemorative cups are not glass?
They're plastic.
They're plastic. All right. Okay, any other questions on Brew Week Last Call event? Okay, no. So our next item is, we've already discussed the annual street paving and repair. I don't know that there's any additional, are there any additional questions that came up from anybody regarding that, the amounts we discussed? That usually begins starting...
Next week.
Next week. So I would also encourage people to, if there still are potholes that haven't been fixed, to make sure you, I know I turned one in today. So if there, you know, they'll be out working on the streets, so. And do we have a list of the streets? I know we got it on our street tour, but is that anywhere listed on the website, anywhere?
I don't believe it is, because he wants to finalize it, so he's working on that this week to determine what's going to be an alternate and what's a go. But we will have it up by the time that you read, that you get the readings.
Okay, the next item is, the Ohio Department of Transportation, ODOT, has a bridge rating and inspection service. Currently, our Engineering Public Works Department has done their own rating, but they are asking us to pass an ordinance to become part of ODOT's system, because they do a more intensive rating of bridges, including load rating and things like that. We do not have all the equipment to do those kinds of inspections. So our Director of Engineering Public Works is asking council to move forward with the, an ordinance that allows us to become a part of this rating system.
Which I think would be a good thing, but just a couple of questions. So that would mean a different set of criteria that would be probably more along national standards.
Correct.
Does that mean more expense for us?
Well, and that's, I'm going...
No expense, it's, they have federal highway money to do this, and...
Okay, right. So we just need to follow along with their guidelines, their standards?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Would you like to add more?
Just that, I believe we talked about this in the committee, we are indeed asking for another suspension on this because...
Right.
We have a bridge that needs to be load-rated over Street in order to align with our Richland South Avenue project, and...
Which bridge, again?
Hooper Street.
I know where it's at.
It's actually culvert on the Hooper side by Pettin Park.
Right.
After Pettin.
As you come down there at the light, it's, and it's right near the bridge that goes over the road right there, so.
It'd be across the street from the Carriage Hill Bridge, which does look like a bridge, which looks like culvert, but technically it's a bridge.
Sure.
Well, this is somewhat of a culvert-looking kind of thing, too, but, but the bottom line is, it does fit in with the whole situation going on in Richland Avenue, so it all coordinates.
Because it's going to get new pavement and everything, it needs to be load-rated in advance of the project, so we are asking that. And if you look at the legislation, it's similar to ODOT paving, when they do, but they actually require a percentage now from the city. In a past, they did not, and in this case, they are not requiring a group of matches.
Okay.
Great.
Thanks. Okay, any other questions on that? All right. Vehicle disposal, okay. We have quite a few vehicles to dispose of, and all departments have been asked whether they could utilize these vehicles. Some of them were actually totaled, I believe, so they're just kind of building and taking up space in a parking lot on West State. So we need to move forward with an ordinance to declare that certain vehicles are no longer needed for municipal purpose. And offer them to other agencies or other people who may need them, like a 501(c) or self or scrap. We need to put this out for bid, so we need to do an ordinance for that. Anybody have any questions?
How many vehicles?
Well, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. 93 Ford Ranger, 98 Dodge Neon, 2008 Crown Vic, 2001 Ford Expedition, 2003 Chevy S10, and a 2003 Chevy S10. Yes, Mayor?
And actually, there are four other vehicles that you disposed of in O68-13. We just haven't gotten rid of them. The idea is, it's always a chore to try putting out bids and doing this. The way we'll do it probably is compare the value of it to scrap metal, and then that'll be the minimum bid for anybody coming in. After that, anybody above that, we'll do it, see what happens on it. I also know that it went out and it was posted, actually, this Sunday, I think, in the Messenger, so I'd like to see this expedited if possible, so we can actually get rid of them all at once. These are mostly in the West State street area, I believe. Some are, I think they're all there now.
They're all down at the...
Service garage, 16th Street.
And the auditor has to look through this and that, and she'll do that with her staff?
I don't know.
But yes, there's a little bit of expedition.
So do you want us to suspend them?
It'd be nice, yes.
Prior to his sealed bid opening date, which I believe he scheduled for the end of the month.
Yeah. I know these are 27th, but somewhere close to there.
Thanks for that.
So we'll have the ordinance read next week, and then look forward to suspending it?
Yes, please.
All right. Any other questions? Urgency clause?
Yes. Get them out of our well field, please.
Okay, next on the list is the West Union Infrastructure Project. We are going to need to do our usual, we've done, we've done some of the work on this, we just need to do some sidewalk assessments. We need to start that process. And I think, is that the only thing that we need to...
Yes, at this moment in time.
Right.
They're still looking at it, checking it once and twice and three times, so we'll have it correct, very detailed and very painful for the council clerk's spreadsheet by next Monday.
And I think one of the bigger things in terms of the engineering of the project was that traffic, pedestrian issue, and that we seem to have resolved that issue, so we'll see that in our final, final draft, if you're looking for the plans. But I think that was an important piece that we wanted to get resolved, on how to move pedestrians safely, not only on the sidewalks, but across Union Street. Any other questions on, Steve?
I have just a large overarching comment, public service announcement that I wanted to throw out, and that is, again, we had the city server, we had the city safety, or not safety, street tour, sorry. And one of the things that came up during the street tour was, again, sidewalks in disrepair and the American Disabilities Act obstacles that some of those can create. So again, just reaching out, since we are talking about sidewalks and sidewalk repairs, reaching out to the community to make sure that everyone is aware that the sidewalk is your responsibility to take care of, especially when there are large heaves in your sidewalk. They create barriers for individuals with disabilities.
Well, and a parallel to that would be, this, without saying a whole lot, it is something that I think council and the administration is aware of. So it was something that we were, we discussed, Member Cochran, myself, Member Pappy, Safety Director and Public Works Director. It was something that came up in a recent transportation meeting, or I guess, I guess that's the proper name of that committee.
We did talk about that, and that wasn't brought up during Personnel and Finance under the annual street repair budgeting question, but Director Stone is looking at how to, on an annual basis, attend to sidewalks that are in the most disrepair in the heavily pedestrian areas. So he is looking at how to work that into the budget, into his annual budget, to figure out how to do that, rather than waiting. The past way that we've done this is, we usually wait for a major road repair, and then the sidewalks are assessed. But he's, he's really looking at how to tie that into, on these heavily traveled areas, because all of our sidewalks have been assessed, I mean, in terms of rated, excuse me, let me change the language, they've been rated, in terms of what kind of shape they're in. So he's hoping to start doing that as part of an annual, his annual paving expense, and be proactive. Does that make sense?
With the idea that it would be assessed to the property owners, athletes?
Not necessarily. Some yes and some no. It kind of, he's trying to figure out how to, I think the basic way is in a, to expedite sidewalks that are in bad shape, how to fix them on an annual basis.
Right.
As time goes on.
My concern would be that some people who've let their sidewalks go for a long time, then automatically, magic, their sidewalks get repaired.
And I don't think that's what he's looking to do.
Right, so it's, at some point, it would be assessed to the property owners of the sidewalks, since the sidewalks are people's responsibility, the landowner's responsibility.
And therein lies the challenge. So we are, we are going to work with the Law Director's Office to see about what is going to be deemed acceptable for documentation for an engineer system, and that's what we need. And secondly, the, a few places that this has occurred has been because of the shade tree that the city had planted, and the huge upheaving of roots. So you've got to, that's where it becomes that weighing of, wow, we've got this area that's, now the sidewalk is completely hooved up, and it is due to the shade tree of which the city planted it in the law. So we correct all that at once, and then that becomes non-assessment. I do want to mention something, we had talked about Ohio University earlier. Ohio University is partnering with us in terms of the West Union Street rehabilitation, in terms of allowing us an easement for a portion of their property in order to build a mini roundabout there at Smith and Union, to do traffic calming, that'll allow us to do a better job with lowering that storm tunnel, you know, we all know the old railroad hump and what have you, get that... hump and what have you, get that repaired. And in addition, they've already reached out to me to ask for their assessment, meaning what dollar amount, because they're all about fixing the sidewalks, and if you go up towards Central Classroom and what have you, they even added curbs. I said, well, the city pays for the curbs, so, but we do that citywide, so they're proactive in their approach, in terms of being able to have that pocket of money assigned for this next fiscal year, which starts July one, and that's essentially when we can start our project.
And that's been an ongoing conversation, in terms of they're also kind of, there's been more campus activity down on that end of Union Street, and so obviously, there's much more foot traffic, and we just need to improve that. So the fact that they are coming and talking with you and part of the planning process, not only discussing it, but financially, that's, that's the partnership that we need to hear. Member Fall, the issue regarding the sidewalks, did that?
Well, I just.
Get cleared up in terms of, we're looking at sidewalks as well, we're looking, our portion is sidewalks where we believe that we were more liable in terms of the heaving, trees, or the whatever, those type of sidewalks.
I just, I don't want it to be out there, oh, if we just leave our sidewalks, then the city will pick it up, because that's not fair to the people who've done sidewalks.
Agreed.
You know, so.
Okay, any other West Union, or any other comments? There's a lot of moving pieces, but. All right. And Ms. Nidalee, you did talk about the OXPO and Richland Avenue issue with the money, and that we had hoped that the state would roll that into our OXPO project, but they decided, no. So we should be moving that forward. Okay, the final item is Cruz Inn. We have two scheduled for this summer. We will move this ordinance forward. We may have a change of date on one of them. July sixth seems to be one of the dates. July twentieth may be in question, so we'll, before the ordinance is written, we will verify that. That happens to be a Sunday, July.
Was that for Court Street?
It's for Court Street, and it's June, I think.
June sixth.
So I have June sixth.
July twentieth.
And Sunday, July twentieth, which we're not sure is accurate.
Which means, do you just keep it closed from the event the night before? I'm not sure about that, so I have to look.
Yeah, we need to find out.
Yeah, because again, yes, exactly.
Okay.
Right, we need to check into that.
But we might need to move on it for the June.
So it could be split into two ordinances?
It hasn't in the past traditionally, but I'll try to, I'll try to get that firmed up.
We'll nail it down tomorrow.
The, the June sixth is five thirty to nine p.m. for the Cruz Inn. And then we usually ban parking on Court Street between Washington and State from one to ten. One p.m. to ten p.m., so people have time to bring their vehicles in, get them parked, get it set up. Wow, I just keep wondering if we'll ever have Court Street open this summer.
We will.
It's gonna be closed a lot. Okay, so you'll just get those, that July date to us to figure that one out. Okay, any questions on Cruz Inn?
Okay, we'll move on to City's Safety Services Committee with Steve Patterson.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have a presentation, another presentation tonight to talk about the Athens Stormwater Management Program. Kathy Bobos.
This is Kathy Bobo. And I'm Abbott Stevenson.
Who will be presenting on the program. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Abbott Stevenson. I am the Urban Conservation Technician for the Athens Soil and Water Conservation District, and I work with the city implementing the Stormwater Management Program. I'm here to talk to you about the City of Athens Stormwater Management Program that we've implemented. Stormwater regulation came about because USCPA, through research, determined that urban runoff and discharges from storm sewers were a major contribution of pollution in this country. Urban stormwater carries sediment, oil, grease, gasoline, lawn care products, dust from brakes and tires, bacteria from animal waste, and it's all pollution which impairs our receiving streams. These are examples of, of those items. This is sediment running off of a construction site. Everybody's seen this in a parking lot in town, oil dripping out of someone's car and running down the street when it rains, trash at the catch basins. This is kind of a new problem, or one that we're starting to fight all over the state. It's where overapplication of fertilizers has caused algae to overpopulate and bloom and affects the quality of life in the ponds and the lakes that, where the pollution is. Improper waste disposal. You know, we still see this occasionally, people dumping waste down a storm sewer, thinking that, or maybe not thinking, but thinking that it's connected to the sanitary sewer and going to be treated, when in fact, it's just going to the river. So, and this is my favorite, we have, we've actually seen this happen. So, you know, you're not supposed to dispose of your animal waste in the storm sewer. In the history of stormwater regulation is that in nineteen ninety, USCPA implemented the Stormwater Regulatory Program for Municipal Separate Storm Sewer Systems, which we abbreviate as MS4, in two phases. Phase one was in nineteen ninety, and it applied to the large municipalities in the country. New York, in Ohio, would be the Big C's. I believe Akron was caught up in that. And then in nineteen ninety-nine, phase two was implemented, and it applied to certain smaller municipalities that had a certain predetermined population density. And now they're looking at other municipalities that have previously not been required to obtain a permit for controlling their storm water. Athens has been lucky so far that we, you know, we have not been asked to get an MS4 permit, but Ohio EPA has indicated to me recently that they believe we will be on the next list, that should come out in the next year. So if they follow through with that, we'll be looking at having to apply for an MS4 permit. In two thousand and eleven, the city passed Title 5.07, which is your ordinance that regulates stormwater activities in the city, in order to protect the streams and the river from pollution. The stormwater regulations address several things, including, any earth-moving construction activity in town must obtain a stormwater permit from the code office. The permit application must include a stormwater management plan. The management plan must follow ODNR's best management practices. And in addition to those, there are regulations prohibiting dumping and illegal connections to the storm sewers. In September of two thousand and twelve, I was hired through a contract with the Athens Soil and Water Conservation District to help the city develop their stormwater program. My background is, I have thirty-one years working for the state of Ohio. The last twenty-two, I was an Ohio EPA employee in Logan, and I worked for the Division of Surface Water, regulating point source discharges, like factories and wastewater, like sewage plants. And I worked with our stormwater coordinator out of Logan, so I have contacts there. So Kathy hired me in two thousand and twelve, after I retired, and we've been working on the program, and I think we've made some pretty awesome, you know, strides to get it together. We, we created a team, the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Team, and we meet every month. We've developed a stormwater permit and plan review process for construction projects. So any, any project that comes in to the code office with a stormwater plan is forwarded to me, I do a review, make comments, and they go back for revision, and then the permit is issued, and so I've done twenty-one stormwater plan reviews since last year, this time. And it's, it's everything from, you know, pretty small projects to, you know.
Just sewage treatment plant.
Yes, sewage treatment plant, exactly. So then we also developed a stormwater, a construction stormwater inspection program, and the wastewater plant is one of my facilities that I inspect. I've completed fifty-six stormwater inspections of construction sites since last year at this time. That includes Ohio University. We've also started development of a stormwater sewer map. Phase one was to identify all of the pipes that discharge to the streams in the Hocking River. And we're almost, I would say we're eighty percent done with this. We've got a couple of challenges due to accessibility to the, the lower section of the Hocking River was great, because it's mowed, and the water level is low, and the pipes are high, and everything's visible, but from Whites Mill to the upper end of town is all overgrown, and we're just having some challenges about how to get to that. So it's a matter of timing and equipment, and we also have to do Margaret's Creek from the mouth to Number Fest, and it's another challenge, because it's steep banks and overgrown, and not exactly weightable. I mean, it might be at certain times of the year, but then everything's overgrown when that's happening, so, but we're working on it. So this was one of my interns from last summer, she was a really big help. These are the kinds of things we're looking for. You've seen these along the river, the tide gates, and some of the more difficult pipes to get to. This is the map that I made of the points that we got last year. There are three hundred and seventeen outfalls that we managed to reach. We did the main stem of the Hocking River, we did Cable Lane, we did Coats Run, Dairy Lane, and it was, you know, climbing over, under, through these creeks to get to any pipe that came out. We also took note, we took a photograph of each pipe, so we have an inventory of pipe. We have a point location with a GPS unit, so, and the plan is to expand that into phase two, which is going to include all the storm drains in town. So we started that last fall with Hope Drive, just mapping basically these catch basins and anything in a parking lot that looks like a storm drain. In addition to the mapping, we, we started a sampling program. Some of those pipes last year that we took the points of were discharging during dry weather, and that could be because there are springs, or maybe Cable Lane's a perfect example. That was a stream at one time, you know, that was fed by groundwater. So, so it makes sense that it would be discharging even when it's dry. So we sampled anything, and we were out in August and September, maybe October, when it should, things should have been dry, and we were able to take thirty-three samples before the season ended. And one, one example of, of an issue that came up was on Dairy Run, below the ridges on the park side, there was a pipe that discharged steady flow, not a lot of water, but, you know, steady flow, and the temperature of the water was twenty degrees above the stream, and the pH was between nine and ten, where a stream should be between seven and eight, and it was high in conductivity. So the city met with Ohio University, since it's their property that it was coming from, and they did an investigation and found that they had a boiler, and, like a boiler overflow, and a water softener discharge going to the storm sewer instead of the sanitary sewer. So they temporarily rigged it to go to sanitary, and they have plans to make it a permanent connection. So that's the kind of thing that we're looking for and hoping to correct with a sampling program. We've also provided some training on best management practices for city employees. We've done some public education on stormwater issues through workshops and public displays. In your packets, there are some pamphlets on some of the educational things we're doing. One I'd like to point out is the Organic Lawn Care, which is coming up here soon, which is a new thing for us, and we're very excited about it. It's a partnership with Ohio University, the Sustainability Group up there, and I, it's actually two, two programs. One is for the professional, lawn care professionals, which will happen during the day, and then the one in the evening is for residents. But I believe, you know, you can go to either or, you just have to notify us as soon as possible, because it's, it's up on the ridges, and you need a parking pass. So we need to get you a parking pass if you're gonna come. Okay, so these are the kind of things that we've been doing. We do a rain barrel workshops, we do, we have a rain garden one coming up, I think. So in addition to the ongoing projects that I mentioned, I am also responsible for doing an annual review of Title 5.07. We've been assisting the engineer, oh, we just finished a project, assisting the engineer's office on a stormwater grant for Union Street, in addition to the necessary engineering project, you know, the paving and, and whatnot. We've got some, some cool stormwater stuff that we got our fingers crossed, that we're gonna get a grant to do a stream reconstruction and some, some of those tree boxes where runoff goes into a, into a box around a tree in the sidewalk, instead of into the storm sewer and, and running off, so we're hoping that we'll get the funding for that. We, I'm also working with the engineer's office to look at pollution prevention for the city and good housekeeping of our own facilities, you know, like the salt facility and the engineer's office, and anywhere, maintenance facilities that would, would have fluids to manage and equipment to manage. We have created, this is a, this just happened this spring, we created a subcommittee to address homes within the city limits that are not connected to the city's sanitary sewers. There are a few of those still out there for whatever reason, and we need to evaluate where they are and, and why they're not connected. Okay, we've also, this winter, I started to draft a stormwater pollution management program, which is what Ohio EPA will ask us to do, once they issue, once they tell us to get a permit and they issue a permit to us. There are several issues that we have to address and tell them how we're gonna handle, a lot of which we've already done through the work that I've done since we've been here, like the mapping is a requirement. And finally, I think we've developed a pretty good relationship with Ohio EPA on the city's behalf from a stormwater standpoint, so. Are there any questions?
I'd like to point out that when people look at their utility bills, this is the sort of program that that fee on the utility bill pays for, which sounds like we're getting a great deal, so.
You've been working very hard.
Yes, and I, I want to point out that it's, when we contract with other organizations like you guys, it's because you guys are the experts, and we don't need to hire and train a new person in the city when we have community resources and governmental resources like you guys that we can contract with, and you guys know the people and have experience. So this is what our money goes to, and I think that it's a great, great program. Thank you.
Just a quick question, the sampling that's done, is it mostly looking at, again, some of the things you were mentioning seem to be, you know, petroleum-based that you're looking at, at gasoline, diesel, brake dust, which isn't petroleum, but it seemed mostly motor vehicle.
The, the sampling that we're doing of these discharges that occur during dry weather are mostly, we're looking for sewage, so we usually run E. coli, which is why the season ends in October, because the, after it gets cold, the E. coli is not as, you know, prevalent. So we're, we're looking for that pH tells us sometimes. It's actually quite interesting, you know, we've found places where we think maybe we have a waterline break that's getting into the storm sewer, because we have fluoride, we're also testing for fluoride. We have fluoride in the water, we don't have E. coli. It's not a sewage problem, but we have city water parameters in it, so it gives the city engineer a place to start looking for a problem, you know, that he didn't know about. He didn't even know that he had a waterline break in this, you know. I mean, it is a little like looking for a needle in a haystack, you know? You have to kind of just trace it back from where you start until you find, you know, it, so.
I'm curious, are there, in the assays that are done, can nicotine products be looked at, or tobacco products be looked at in there as well? I came across a couple articles, recent two thousand and twelve and two thousand and thirteen, that speak to cigarette butts, filters, as well as tob- filters, as well as tobacco and what that can do in, in storm water, the toxicity that we see with those types of things in it.
Actually, I don't know much about that, but you know, I'm sure you can test for whatever you want to test for as long as you're willing to pay the price, you know. We're trying to keep what we're testing for, something that your lab can do here in town. It's kind of like the first run at these things and I'm sure we'll go back to these locations once we, once we think we've solved the problem, we'll go back and test them and to prove whether we have or not. So, and it is kind of a guessing game. Like when you look at the water, you smell, you know, you have to evaluate, do I want to spend $500 to run a sample on everything possible when the water looks clear and it smells good, you know? Or, or can these basic things that we run, like conductivity and pH, tell us enough whether we need to spend the $500 on additional sampling? So it's going to be a kind of a learning curve and, and we're not the first ones to do this. So we have a little bit to learn from the bigger cities that have been doing it since, you know, 1990.
Member Robert.
Ladies first.
Well, I have, we have a unique community here because we also live in an area that used to be surrounded by coal mines and things like that. So you have the acid mine drainage. So our situation may be different from an urban area in some, in terms of some of the things you're looking for. But also I'm pretty excited about the fact that when you showed us the mapping, I mean, we will have a good understanding of what is going on in this community as we move, you know, into the future in terms of whatever industrialization happens here or whatever's going on. So this is excellent forethought for our community planners and those of you in your agency because stormwater is, is really an important piece to all of this and people don't think about it as much. And then, oh, I was going to say something else. I just think it's a coordinated effort. We already have the wellhead protection plan, you know, so this is the next piece to all of that. So it's just, it's from a health and safety kind of looking at your community and truly, does it just look pretty and clean just because everyone has beautiful manicured lawns? No, because there's all these other issues that go into that. So I think it's an incredible education effort as well. So, thank you.
Remember Cochran, do you want?
I just wanted to say thank you for your presentation. It's really informative and, and also to plug the workshop that's coming up on the ridges because, you know, every day I think when we walk around, this should be an important reminder that what you put on your yard goes into our, our waterways and, and, you know, we have kids playing down at the river sometime. We have people fishing in, in those waterways and so we want them to be clean. It's not just a matter of, you know, being an environmentalist, it's a matter of being healthy and being safe. And so just, and I understand there are also CE's available for lawn care professionals who attend the, the daytime sessions, is that right?
I'm not sure about that, I'm not sure.
That, I, I was told that actually by my brother who was, actually, I'm sorry, maybe I'm getting confused with the forestry workshop, so I'm sorry about that. But, but nonetheless, you know, we, we want to make sure that people know about this event that's coming up on the 20th at the ridges.
The, the lawn care issue is, is becoming a big deal in this state. We have learned a big lesson from Grand Lake St. Mary's in northwest Ohio. And they have, an algae bloom up there is toxic to humans and to pets. And they're trying to figure out how to deal with this algae that comes back every year that's fed by not just the lawn, you know, lawn care, but it's also farming in the area up there. And it's a, it's a serious problem. And we, you know, we're seeing it pop up around the state, you know, before I left Ohio EPA it was a little bit here, a little bit there. And, you know, so we need to get the word out to the public that they're part of the solution to that problem. That, you know, if, and, and I believe the fertilizer industry is also stepping up and changing their formulas to help improve the situation too, so.
Now, deer offs are okay, right?
I don't think it's toxic.
Don't open another thing, hopefully.
I don't think it's toxic.
This literature is available in the city building? I think I've seen some of this, so.
I'm sure some things that are in there, yes.
Yeah, people can get it downstairs.
And I think we have them at the library and at the rec center. We, we try to keep them out there in the public.
Member Robert.
Yeah, thank you. I wanted to, again, acknowledge my appreciation for the hard work and the presentation. Something that I feel compelled to acknowledge that Member Pappy also alluded to was our wellhead protection area. And as the representative for the first ward on the west side, I often receive feedback as, as does the mayor's office about our wellhead protection area and the abundance of cars that are there enjoying our recreation activities and services that, that we have within the community. So at some point perhaps, not to put you on the spot, but at some point if you're able to maybe help guide us or offer more feedback or input regarding that area and how to best handle the abundance of cars that are there. I don't, I'm not exactly sure, but it is, a concern that's been expressed to some, to some of us by westsiders.
To the runoff, like if oil drips out of a car?
Correct.
On the parking area?
Or, and/or parking off of that in the grass.
Okay.
So like, that's.
It's a, it's kind of interesting that I've, we've actually, the wellhead and I have clashed on a couple of projects because I'm trying to promote retaining water on the site because we need to restore groundwater. You know, everything is paved now and water runs off and that's why we have more flooding of the river. You know, we need to start looking backwards and retaining the water on our properties to water our flowers, to promote infiltration into our, our own soil, you know. And the wellhead protection folks don't want to encourage groundwater infiltration and I totally get that. But I think that the two ideas can be, you know, it's just a little more complicated, but we can work together. We just, it's, it's a little more complicated.
And to really drill that home, her husband is who, is our wellhead protection investigator and she is our stormwater. We reached a really good compromise when it came to like Larry's Doghouse's additional parking lot. So as opposed to having a rain garden in the middle of the parking lot that might seep into, it came from the gutters, is I believe.
His concern was, was in the wintertime, most people put salt on their parking lots, you know, and he didn't want us encouraging that runoff to go to a place where it would then seep into the ground, like a garden area, and pollute the groundwater. And I totally get, you know, the salt issue on, in the wellhead area. So, but I, I think that there's some, we just need to work a little better, communicate better, so. Even at the dinner table.
Quite the professional team, so.
Mayor?
I would point out that we're ahead of the curve in terms of stormwater management. I say that because I've talked to the mayors and, again, they, they've been pulling the trigger on and saying, you've got to, you've got to work on your system. Some systems are really in bad shape because they blended both sanitary and storm together and now they've been mandated to take them apart, you know, which is pretty expensive, or work with that and how to mediate that. So by doing what we've been doing in the past couple of years, whether it's the, the legislation we put forward, the permeability, 60% permeability on residential areas so we can make sure we get sort of, yeah, infiltration, we're actually ahead of this. So we're, we're, you know, we're not going to be in some kind of shock when they do pull the trigger on it and say, you've got to do this.
I'm going to take my Athens Southern Water hat off and put on my retired Ohio EPA hat for a minute and say that as a member of this community and a retired Ohio EPA person, I am thrilled that you guys are ahead of this issue. I mean, it just, it's amazing and, and, you know, it, it gives me a sense of pride in my community that you guys are addressing this problem before you're actually told to. However, it is coming. I do think it's right around the corner, so. But I, I really think it's, and it's something I say when I talk to people, that I'm really proud that I work for, you know, the city in this capacity because you're ahead of the game.
Well, thank you. Thank you for your presentation and coming and speaking before council.
Thanks for hiring.
I believe, yep, nevermind, it's not there. Oh, there was an item that was tabled. I do want to move on to, to the second item on our agenda, which is litter and looking at the fine structure. From what I understand, the, the fine structure for, for litter, which comes under Title 5 as well as Title 29 housing regulations, Title 5 being public utilities, is that, I'm, I'm sorry. Yes, Title 5 and Title 29, is that those fee, those fee structures or fine structures have been around since I believe it's 2003.
Actually, 2008, I think.
2008 is when it was, it was revised last.
Yeah, we, we adjusted it then, I believe.
Fines or fees?
These are fines. If I said fee, I misspoke, it's, it's fines. They're currently, first penalty or first violation is $20, then it goes to 40, 60, 80, and then 100. And looking at, at the report that was put out by the ad hoc committee, the Athens, the ad hoc code committee, I know that was addressed under that committee. We also had a presentation a couple of weeks ago from the West Side Community Association's Beautification Committee that brought forth some suggested changes to code. So this is an item that we'll probably be moving forward in the future in terms of looking at this. And I, I think there's a lot of other code out there that we're, I think we have equally old fine structures associated with them. So that's something that will be coming forward.
I, I'd like to point out that a fine of what, the first, of what, what is it, $20? It's a joke. I mean, it's, it's, when you drive down the roadways and there's like fines up to $500 for littering, I mean, I think that, you know, I've heard tell people to say, oh, well, I'll just pay the fine, you know? And I think that coupled with the stormwater management, you know, every piece of garbage that goes is a potential, you know, point source of pollution. Besides it being a health and safety issue and increase in rats, I mean, it's disturbing that you see, you can see rats sometimes around these piles. And it's just also an economic development issue. I think that it all rolls up and that if we need to fine people and have to slap people on the hand harder because they can't clean up after themselves, then I think we need to, you know, go hard and, you know, I'm all for, you know, going bigger than smaller. Your mother does not listen.
The mayor has provided the co-director with the history of the fines and so he's going to drill back and look through it. I think from your, from the ad hoc that I remember, Michelle and Joe, you wanted us to look at a number of different fees, fee structures.
Fee structure, right.
So at the same time. But yeah, seems hands down, nobody thinks $50 is too much to pay for.
Not for your first, for your first, any, apologies for interrupting, but in my conversations with, with John Paskey, because I asked a question, I said, how many, how many people do you have where you've exceeded the four violations, which is the maximum of $100? And he was, he said, lots of individuals. It kind of goes back to, remember Fall, what you're just saying, it's kind of like the 20,000, or the $20, $20,000, the $20 fine, kind of like, eh. And, and it almost kind of got that way at the upper end too with 100, eh, $100. So it is time to revisit this.
I mean, we should look at per day also. I mean, the thing is, is every time somebody complains about litter, it costs money to go out and look at the litter, write a citation, follow up on the citation, make sure they pay. If they don't pay, then you have to do all the other stuff with it. And, you know, it's, and then by that time, the litter is down in the, you know, on the street. If it's broken bottles, it's already probably cut somebody's foot or slapped somebody's, you know, bicycle tire, it's done the damage. And, you know, if people want the privilege of littering, then they should pay the responsibility for having that supposed privilege. And I would look at per day. This is expensive. Litter is really expensive for our community.
Well, I would just make a note on move out. Move out happened, is it two weeks now? Week and a half. And, you know, we still have quite a bit of litter in the gutters, in bushes. Houses have been cleaned, but outside property, which is what we're talking about. And you talk about the cost of making the phone call, whoever's, is taking the picture or making the phone call, to getting the staff out there to write the ticket or call whoever they need to call. I can only, I'm just basically echoing what Member Fall has said. It's, you know, it's, it's unsightly.
Something else that I think needs to be addressed is within code, as you read through the definitions of litter and trash, one of the things that is lacking is, and I've seen this in other cities, is tobacco products. This may sound really petty and, and small to a lot of people, but again, I brought this up during the, the stormwater presentation. It's the fact that, that during beautification day, on, within a two-hour span of time, we collected over 5,000 cigarette butts from the different locations for those that were doing them. And that was a small number, people picking those up. Cigarette butts is an EPA issue. It's interesting, the issue that it is. The toxicity of cigarette butts and tobacco products in our water supply, or stormwater supply is something that's worth addressing. And I think by strengthening the definitions of what litter and trash is to include those, that it could be that, you know, cigarette butts fall into that as well, you know, as part of the litter stream that we see all over the place, you know, whether it's uptown or it's in the neighborhoods, but it's, it needs to be addressed.
I think the last time you changed it was 05508 was the increase.
Thank you.
Previous to that, the previous fines and fee ordinance was 012906. At that time, the old, the old fines were 20, 30, 40. So we went to the, you know, 20, 20, 40, 60, 80, 100. So I guess it's time to do something like that. In terms of fees, I think the discussion was increasing some of the rental permits to make it even 100, I think. But you want to give some lead time for the landlords to deal with that or get prepared for it. We do have an ordinance about being litter 18 inches off the curb. One of the issues, of course, with cigarette butts and any of these things is, you know, how to, you know, to find somebody at the household. I mean, if somebody flicks a cigarette butt in front of your yard and you don't catch it before the code officer does or litter control officer does, would you be fined for it? And how do you want to go about doing that?
Sure.
I mean, in other words, they're a victim of littering on their, on their lawn.
Then it goes to the property owner. We, we always stay away from the property owner. He'll put it back on or she'll put it back on the tenants in the home.
He means like somebody flicking a cigarette onto your property.
Yeah, I understand, I understand. But that's my property, I'm supposed to clean it up.
I agree. I clean up my property. When I see something lying on my lawn, yes.
Pick up other people's trash all the time.
I stopped doing that. I do the first step, I don't put it there. If everybody did that, we wouldn't have to pick up that.
I just, I just agree wholeheartedly that we need to look at the, the fine structure, update that, combine it with the education. Because, yeah, when they were making, we had the presentation with soil and water conservation. I'm thinking as OU moves to the cigarette filter free campus, we're going to be faced with at the same time needing to move forward, doing something about this. And I think you're already beginning to look at some, some measures we might take. But, you know, it's not uncommon for our code enforcement office to find people sweeping from the, you know, the bars right out into the streets and the stormwater. It just, we can't, we can't have it. Water's precious.
And just to follow up on what you were saying there about the fee structure changing in '06 to '08, the change was simply adding 80 and then 100. So it was, it still held the $20 fine that you had initially, 20, 40, 60, and stopping at 60, correct?
Yeah.
So it's time to look at this.
Actually stopped at 40.
Or 40.
20, 30, 40.
Okay, yep. For city and safety services, our last item again, and this is just to open up the dialogue and start discussion on this, and that it would be for uniform solid waste receptacles, trash cans, basically is what we're talking about. And I've kind of been exploring a little bit some of the, the costs of these and, you know, for these sturdier trash cans on wheels that are kind of uniform, possibly a couple different sizes. I've seen out there that there's 35 gallon, 55 gallon, or 65 gallon and 95 gallons, 95 and 95 gallons, 95 gallon waste bins are Herculean, they're huge.
You could live in it.
You could live in them. But that aside, again, a lot more to come on that, but at least to get the conversation started on having uniform waste cans through our trash receptacles throughout the city.
Choice of color?
Black, blue, and gray.
I would, I would encourage even looking less than 35 gallon, because there's going to be an issue with, one, we're trying to go towards a zero waste, and so if you have, I know we do much less than 35 gallons in a week, I'm amazed at these rentals, what do, how are they just having so much garbage? It's just amazing. The older people, you know, I know people, my neighbors, who like to have a bag because it's much easier to take three bags out than a garbage container, and so we need to be able to look at that sort of issue, so.
Member Fall, we're going to move on to your committee.
Oh, actually, in terms of containers, really the process of standardizing is so we can actually get a better productivity in terms of standardizing our waste containers for single stream eventually for recycling. And again, a smaller, we probably wouldn't want to look at several different sizes as we go towards recycling. Realize for the pilot compost pilot programs, as it will be initiated sooner later in one of the dialogues I've gotten with Mr. Leard, is, you know, people saying, well, this is going to cost us more, and that's, it comes down to a question of, if you're diverting some of that compost to a compost system, or, you know, the trash to that, do we want to go with a smaller one? I myself don't really pull out, you know, 30 gallon drum, you know, garbage can regularly. So, therefore, I, and I know there's people who come to me and say, why can't I pay less? And we have a bottom rate, of course, but the fact is, we probably, if you're looking at fees and fines, we might want to look at that schedule too. If I remember that, we have a limiting or factor of how many households, how many bedroom units in the rental market, you know, in other words, if you have the expectation, if you have a rental, you're going to use two cans automatically unless you can prove otherwise, and downgrade to one can per week. Same thing with the number of units, and this, again, this partially comes to the planning commission side of it too, where we have to look and say, how do we strengthen our legislation for requirements for new development, new structures? Right now, I think the terminology is adequate waste society, and adequate is a very nebulous term, so we seem to have lost the ability to say, okay, how much garbage space do you need, how much recycled places do you need? So, there are aspects of that, but again, it's really the thrust for a uniform can is so we do have a better accounting, and as well as the efficiency of picking up and eventually seeing a single stream recycling. And it's going to cost money.
It is going to cost money.
Okay, just so you know.
Thank you.
Now, Member Fall.
Okay, I'll make this quick. My one item is actually split into two. First, the Sustainability Commission has asked to amend its, the ordinance, the organic ordinance that founded the commission, so that it mimics the AMAC, which allows for two people outside of the city to be on the commission, and the idea with this is that they are looking at, you know, issues that sometimes go outside of the city, and they think that having a larger voice is a good idea for their, for the Sustainability Commission, and this comes from them. So, I think, just like the Historic Preservation Commission, we've changed their committee membership, how they would, thought it would work for them, and so this is something, especially with new commissions, that is, makes sense, so. Are there questions?
Maybe I misunderstood, was this going to be adding two people?
No, it would be allowing up two people on the commission to be outside of the city people, so.
So, there might be?
Right, there might be.
Or might not, okay.
One or two, so. And I'll bring that forward, the language, next week, see, a lot of discussion about that. And the second one is that there is people, two new people who will, who've asked to be members of the commission. We've had two people leave, mostly because they graduate, because we do always have somebody from OU, normally from the Office of Sustainability, and then one person retired, resigned, because of time and commitment problems. So, the two new people that would, I would like to have council put on the board is Tess Finney, who's a grad student in Environmental Studies Program, she actually lives up at the Eco House, and she has worked with the Office of Sustainability. And then Meredith Price Mullins, who's a former high school student, high school, I'm sure she was a student, she was a high school biology teacher, science teacher, and she lives in the city, they both live in the city at present, so, I guess next week I'll, you can just, so. That's all.
Okay, hamburger in the refrigerator. And that ends the evening, it's kind of late for us, thank you for sticking around.